Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meeting for September 9, 2024. First item on the agenda is called to order. It is now called to order. May I have a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton is absent. Commissioner Nakigiri.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Halserman is also absent. Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
The former's present.
Thank you. Item number three, call to the public. It's a three-minute call to the public. Have we any cards?
Yes, I have two cards. The first one from Ellen, three cards. The first one from Ellen Akeaton of Heartland Township, followed by Mary Whitalek of Green Oak Township.
Got it. When you're seated and comfortable, you get three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Hello again. My name is Ellen Akeaton from Heartland Township. I mainly talk, chose to speak again at the call to the public because I want to reiterate a point that I had made during a previous meeting because the commissioner that I really wanted to hear was absent, unfortunately, so I will say it again. So back several weeks ago, I actually ran into someone while on the way home from work. I ran into someone who told me about his experiences of not having access to a car living in Tyrone Township, you know, just a few miles south of Fenton. And he had to, multiple times a week, take the walk all the way into the, to the MTA bus stop in Fenton, take the bus to Flint, another one to Auburn Hills. We spent an hour in Great Lakes Crossing Purgatory and then yet another bus just to get to Pontiac and then do all that in reverse multiple times a week. You know, I think we're really failing our residents when we don't have good regional transportation and then they have to rely on whatever patchwork the surrounding counties are providing us. So I actually want to, you know, since this resident is in your district, Commissioner Domas, I actually would like to invite you to maybe potentially, you know, reenact this bus ride. I'd be willing to go with you or any other commissioner to.
Ma'am, you have to address the chair. You don't get to address individual commissioners. So talk to me.
Okay. Well, you know, I just wanted to extend that invitation to, you know, experience the commute that this person has to go through multiple times a week, you know, for yourself.
Next card, please.
Mary Whitalek, Green Oak. I did it right that time. Followed by Mike Stanton of Marion Township.
Good evening. My name's Mary Whitalek, Green Oak Township. I wanted to speak a bit more about this resolution that was passed at the Courts and Public Safety Committee earlier today, which is in full support of the MAGA pledge to start mass deportations immediately after Trump takes office, assuming he takes office. And this resolution is his first step by creating a registry of undocumented immigrants. A few points about these immigrants. Many of them are here waiting their asylum claim. So they are not illegal. They were allowed into the country. They are undocumented, but they are allowed to stay in the country while they await their asylum claim. Now, the bipartisan bill, which Trump killed earlier this spring, would have vastly increased the resources to process these asylum claims. Could have been reduced from a 10-year wait to six months, but it was more important for that, for the Trump administration to, or Trump to campaign on this issue. It's really amazing to me, the legitimacy given to this man who traffics in cruelty, fear-mongering, and lies. And the lies he spreads. I mean, a few people at their earlier meeting brought up Aurora, Colorado. Nothing's going on there. There was an incident because there was a slumlord that is not providing safe homes for these immigrants. And the police chief says it's a problem that's been dealt with. Same thing Springfield, Ohio. This is not happening. Immigrants are not eating pets. Talk to the police there. Nothing's been reported. So it's all this fear-mongering on and on and on. But just going on, the things, the lies that are said. I mean, Trump says that tariffs are paid by foreign countries. We all know that's not true. They're paid by the importer and passed on to the consumer. He lies about executing babies at birth. He lies about students going to school one gender and coming back home as a different gender. He lies about crime rates. He did that right here in Howell. He said that the crime rate is up 47% in our country. That's a lie. Violent crimes have shown a year-over-year decrease and is below the pre-COVID levels. So where are we putting our faith, seriously, passing this ridiculous?
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution? Thank you.
Next card, please.
Mike Stanton, Marion Township.
When you're seated and comfortable, you have three minutes.
Good evening, gentlemen. I didn't intend to speak tonight. I'm not feeling comfortable doing it a lot, but something, this is campaign season and to tie into what been the main subject tonight about the immigration. And I just listened to how we want to tie all this national politics into our local politics. Trump's getting blamed for something and he's not even in an office. I don't know how we could stop all this, but I didn't want to go there. It's, it's campaign season and been out door knocking and I happened to be talking to Wes and I told him something that really resonated with me. And knocking on the door, I come across a liberal and I, nothing wrong with liberals, but she found out that I was talking for conservatives. Oh, and I know when I moved here in Livingston County, I knew I was going to have to put up with you guys, with you conservatives. So I asked, well, why did you move here? Was it because we're, we have low taxes? Did you come here because we're safe? Did you come here because we have great services and a great community? And she goes, well, yeah, kinda, that's part of it. I said, well, don't you realize that the negative, the people who you say are controlling our county are bad, has given us all this? They are the purpose or the reason we have it, because we have good stewards. And what we're talking about tonight, I think people got to understand that you have to address issues before things happen. It's better to be proactive than reactive. And that's all we're looking at. And so I thank you, gentlemen, for the great job I think you're doing. And I just, all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Next card.
Good evening. I'll be brief. My husband always says I have to have the last word, so here I go. Back to this resolution, which I fully support. And again, it's a matter of being proactive. We don't want to get like Aurora and Springfield and for people to say it's not happening. I don't know what they're looking at. There are clips, there are board meetings, there are people, there's a guy walking around with the goose, the cat from the tree. It's happening. So we can bury our head in the sand or we can be proactive. And as to crime statistics, they may be lower because a lot of them aren't reported. And shoplifting and all this stuff, they have minimums, like you can take 950 bucks, no problem. So let's, you know, take a closer look. Those statistics are not truly accurate. Thank you.
I have no other cards.
Thank you. Proceed to Zoom, then.
I have Janine.
Thank you. When, you can unmute your equipment and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Drick, and good evening to all the commissioners. I just wanted to comment further as well. You know, I do commend you all as good stewards. That's why our community has the lowest taxes. That's why our community is safe and a great place to live. By contrast, the Biden-Harris administration have not been good stewards. We have the worst inflation in decades, the highest food prices, the highest of all consumer goods and services are the highest ever, the highest ever fuel prices to fuel our vehicles and to heat our homes. We, you know, on Biden and Harris's watch, have the highest interest rates in decades for buying a home. And as a result, you know, the, the ability for the younger generation to buy houses is basically vanished. The American dream has been destroyed by the Biden-Harris administration as well as our state government. We have this border policy, as I mentioned in the earlier meeting, you know, Biden-Harris rejected the stay in Mexico and other border securing measures and actually funded, used our taxpayer dollars to actually facilitate the migrant invasion of illegal immigrants to the tune of millions, putting them on welfare, giving them housing, replacing, you know, schools, you know, with, with making it migrant housing and having the kids learn on Zoom, you know, making American second-class, you know, people in their own country. And this is what, this is the kind of stewards that we have currently in office. And as I mentioned earlier, they need to be fired and we need to reelect every commissioner sitting here in November as well. That's my comments for the evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't have any further hands, Commissioner.
Thank you, Krista. The call to the public is now closed. Onto item number four on our agenda, approval of agenda. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second. Motion by Sample, second by Fiani to approve agenda. Voice vote, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero passes. We're on to item number five, resolutions for consideration. 5.1 reads 2024-09-118. It's a resolution to retain the non-union employees, elected officials, commissioners, and judges' benefit plans for the 2025 fiscal year, brought to us by Human Resources. Can I get a motion?
Hold your resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Domas, support by Commissioner Smith. Move into the discussion phase. Anyone wish to discuss or listen to a presentation by Jennifer who's on Zoom? Jennifer, I think you're off the hook. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'll close the discussion and we'll move to a vote. All those in favor kindly voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seven to zero, it passes. We're on to item number six, entitled accounts payable reports. 6.1 reads claims dated September 9, 2024, and 6.2 reads payables dated August 17 through August 30, 2024. Can I get a motion on both 6.1 and 6.2?
So move Gross.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second Sample.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Gross, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Any discussion? Seeing no hands, we will go to a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing voter? Seven to zero, passes. We're on to FOIA, F-O-I-A, Freedom of Information Act appeals. The first one is 7.1. The appellant is Victoria Cadosten. Do we have a person named that or someone that's representing this person, either in the room or on Zoom? Must somebody appear and present or do we just do it with what we have?
Process the information from the board coordinator and then render your decision on the appeal.
Very good. Ma'am Clerk.
Good evening, questioners. We did receive a FOIA request from Ms. Cadosten and we received that July 31st. All commissioners should have received a packet with the information at that point in time. You know, it's a search that's asking for all communications from a time period of January 1, 2024 through current. It includes about 12 search terms or names along with eight email domains that will be included. And then they're asking for the communications for all people who report to both Elizabeth Hundley, county clerk, myself, and Christie Cox, my chief deputy. So IT is the most efficient way to access all of these communications. And so we sent this over, the request over to IT. They are estimating that it will be 1.5 hours of IT staff time to do the search on this. That fee is $72.72. As you are probably aware, the judiciary or the courts, including communications from the circuit court clerk, are not subject to FOIA. They are not considered a public body. So of these 21 individuals that will be having email scrubbed, there's a possibility that some of these are going to include court communications. So with that, I have estimated a three-hour timeframe to review and potentially redact because we will not be disclosing court communications. And so it's an estimate of three hours and we're using Joe Bridgman's wages. He is the lowest-paid qualified staff member to ensure that we are doing this properly. So at the current time, the FOIA fee estimate is $234.12. The policy would require a 50% deposit to get started on this and I would just ask the board to uphold their FOIA policy.
Thank you. Any questions for the presenter, our clerk?
What was the total amount?
With half requested upfront.
Yes. In order to start proceeding, it would require 50% deposit. And it's just a fee estimate. It may come in higher, it may come in lower.
Did the 234 include the IT costs?
Yes, it did. It included both the one and a half hours for IT plus three hours to review.
Sounds pretty low.
I agree.
It's reasonable.
Having heard that, this is an appeal. Counselor, do we vote to sustain the appeal or reject the appeal or what verbiage might we use to have a correct vote?
So you could have a motion to either waive, reduce, or uphold the fee. And so you would effectively be rejecting the appeal and upholding the fee estimate as presented. If that is what you're inclined to do, you have those three options, however.
I'd like to make a motion to uphold the appeal amount.
Motion by Sample, support by Smith, I believe. Correct, Marty?
Yes.
Yes, I heard, I heard correctly.
Clarification, what was the motion?
The motion was to uphold the fee, which is, has two parts. One, the estimated 234, and then the portion that would need to be paid in advance as a deposit of 117.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I just wanted to suggest and to authorize the board chair to issue a written response to the appeal.
I'll accept that friendly amendment.
And a friendly second also.
Yes.
Natalie, do you have everything? Thank you. Any discussion on the motion to uphold the fee and to authorize the board chair to issue written opinion, written document? Discussion. Seeing none, I'll close the discussion. We'll go to a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a seven to zero and we have upheld the fee and we've authorized the board chair to issue written.
Thank you, commissioners.
Matt, will you prepare something for me to sign?
We've, we've provided it. Yep.
It's already open.
Perfect. You've got it. Right. Okay. I've got it.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. We now move on to Freedom of Information Act Appeal number 7.2 on the agenda. The appellant is Yvonne Black. And I believe Yvonne's on Zoom. And would it be Nathan speaking afterwards?
Mr. Norfolk.
Chair, I can fill in some context on this one.
Prelimarily to the recitation of Ms. Black's position, before, after?
Well, you've got, what you've got before you here is a denial of request because the subject of the request involved court records and that information was communicated by the court. There's separate FOIAs submitted to the county, so the county responded that the responsive documents were court records. And you've heard previously in the FOIA appeal, that is accurate, that the court is not a public body subject to FOIA. So we are technically required to have an appeal. However, these, this request involves records that we do not control. The chief judge makes a determination regarding the status of those records. And again, FOIA is not relevant because the court is not a public body. And now we have an appeal and an appellant, who I understand to be on Zoom, who would like to advocate her position.
Ms. Black, did you hear the counselor so far? Yvonne, if you'd unmute, you can participate.
Commissioner, she is unmuted, so I don't know. Maybe Yvonne, is your volume up?
Ms. Black, can you hear us? Do we have problems at our end that anybody can detect in the IT situation?
No, we have no problems on our end.
Okay. Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yeah, this is a little bit of a tangent or maybe a big tangent, but a question for counselor. Is it, why aren't the courts subject to FOIA? Is that a statute or is it the courts, being their own branch of government, that, you know, set their own, their own rules? Why, do you know the genesis of that? Why, why the courts aren't subject to FOIA?
Statutorily, but I think you also answered the basis for why, which is the separate judicial branch piece constitutionally, but it is not covered by the statute.
So they're not covered by the statute? Could they, who would have the authority in the courts to say, well, we're gonna, you know, honor FOIAs? Is that, can they do that or is they, are they statutorily prohibited from doing that?
They're not statutorily prohibited, they just are not subject to FOIA. So if they wanted to voluntarily produce information, that would be under the chief judge role.
So the chief judge of the county?
Hmm.
Okay.
Well, as it relates to county court documents. So they're not subject to FOIA. There's nothing other than their own internal decision-making. So this, this FOIA request involved court security plans. That is something that the court is not going to disclose or respond to the FOIA because it doesn't, it's not required to. And we need to defer to the decision of the chief judge as it relates to the structure of the law here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Black, can you respond? Can you unmute or turn your volume up and/or participate tonight? Ms. Black, I give you one last chance. This will be the third strike. Would you like to participate and speak and talk to what the attorney said, talk to your position on this matter, explain why you think the courts should divulge the information
You can see that, you know, he used to have the red mic.
I believe I've given sufficient chances and sufficient time for Ms. Black to respond, so we will proceed with a vote because we still have the choice to waive, reduce, or reject. I don't think there's any fee involved, correct, Matt?
The options, and it's a little tricky because these are court records, so our jurisdiction doesn't apply, but the options technically are uphold the denial, reverse the denial, or uphold the denial in part and reverse in part due to the, this is a unique case. So with it being court records, my recommendation would be to uphold the FOIA denial.
But our other choice is reverse or do part and part?
Correct.
That's a choice.
It's a choice. I don't know if we could.
I'm not advocating, I'm just making sure everybody understands. Can I get a motion and a second on one of our choices?
I will be vote to uphold the denial.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross has made a motion to uphold the denial. Can I get a second?
Second Sample.
Commissioner Sample is seconded. Any discussion or observation, comment?
Chair, I would just like to make the same suggestion that we also include authorization for the board chair to sign the written response.
Is that a friendly amendment acceptable to Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Is that a friendly amendment acceptable to seconding Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Hearing that, that's part of the motion. Commissioner Nakigiri.
I have an educational question. If we motion to reverse the denial, I don't think we have authority to do that, do we, Counselor?
Well, I think that we couldn't produce the document unless the court authorized it. So even if, it may be moot. So if we did take that action, and I understand it's a hypothetical, it's not a document in our possession or control.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further comment or question? Proceed to voice vote. All those in favor of upholding the denial with authority for the board chair to sign a document. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero, that is the will of the board and how we have proceeded. We're going to need something to sign. Got that one? Oh, okay, good. We're so, we're so close to the end then. Item, agenda item number eight, call to the public number two. It's a two-minute call. Do we have any cards?
I have a card from Ellen Akeaton of Heartland Township.
When you're seated and comfortable, you've got two minutes, ma'am. Go ahead. When you're seated uncomfortable, you've got two minutes, ma'am. Go ahead.
All right. I just wanted to say a few last words regarding the topic at the very, very beginning of all of this mess, the, the immigrant thing. So, you know, one of the points that I heard brought up a few times was the point that any, any crime committed by an immigrant is preventable by having the immigrant not be allowed to enter. This is technically true in a very unhelpful way. You could say that about literally any group of people. You know, you, you could say that, you know, any crime committed by someone with blue eyes, for example, could be prevented if you arrest everyone with blue eyes. I know that's like a really extreme example, but you know, I'm just trying to illustrate how, you know, unhelpful this is. And like, at the, at the end of the day, you know, crimes are committed by people. And the reality is that, you know, regardless of where people are gonna come from, you know, it's technically true. If you have less people, you're going to have less crime. That's, that's, that's just how it works, you know. You know, and while, yes, reducing immigrant, illegal immigration reduces the number of people, you know what else does that is, you know, having less babies be born would also reduce the amount of crime. So it's like, you know, when you make this kind of argument, you know, I just, you know, I, I want you to consider the, this kind of line of thinking. You know, I'm trying to advocate for anything particular. I just want you to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Any further cards?
I have no other cards.
Anyone on Zoom? Any person on Zoom wish to participate in the last call to the public tonight?
I do not see any, Commissioner.
I concur. Call to the public number two on our agenda is now closed. Item number six is the adjournment. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Support.
Moved by Fiani, support by Nakigiri to adjourn. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero, the adjournment motion passes. Thank you.